Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, June 15th Board of Selectmen's Meeting. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I do have one thing under Chairman's announcements, which is the Boston Post Kane announcement. We'd like to present Marion F. Stebbins with the Boston Post Kane Certificate for holding the honorary position of the eldest resident in town. Ms. Stebbins' birthdate is December 11th, 1921, making her 100 years young. Her family members are unable to make the meeting, so we're going to mail her the certificate that we did all sign, I think, in our last executive session. So congratulations to Marion, and hopefully she can retain that position for quite some time.
Another 20 years.
All right. Which brings us to the next item, which is the Citizens Forum. Is there anyone here for anything that is not currently on our agenda this evening? Seeing as none, I would like to ask the board to humor me by taking Agenda Item 9, which is our usual place marker for open session topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of the meeting, and have a discussion on a special election for selectmen. So, as we all know, the recount happened, and it resulted in another deadlock.
Yep.
Except for you, Mr. Fitzpatrick, who...
I retained my four votes. They weren't able to get them away from me.
Did they try?
They tried. They tried. They creeped up a little bit, but not totally.
So it puts us in a position where we have a couple of options as to what we can do. We can either, as a board, agree that we will hold a special election and turn that over to the town clerk to get caucuses and all the other things ready necessary in order to do that. The other option that we have is to leave the board as a four-man board until the next regular election, which would be when Tim and I are up.
Which would make that third person a two-year seat.
Yeah. We'd have to change that seat to two years.
But even if we did decide to wait, somebody could come forward with signatures and force the...
Correct. As long as we're not... no closer than 100 days to the next election.
Well, I think it's quite a ways till May. So if this was two or three months, I'd say, "Let's wait." But given where it is, I think we ought to have a special election in case a couple of people on the board are incapacitated or whatever. It's good to have that fifth person there. So I think we ought to have it. Then the question is when.
Yeah. So I called the State Election Board today just so we could have this information for us for tonight. And the minimum waiting period after you vote on it is 64 days. And the nomination papers would have to be to the town clerk 49 days prior to the election. So that would be 15 days from today if, in fact, that you decided to have it 64 days out. Unless it's a caucus nomination, then it would be 38 days. But you can move the date further out. The 64 days from today would be August 18th, and you're probably not going to get anybody in the middle of something to come vote, so.
September looks like maybe a good time.
September or October, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not checking messages or anything. I'm looking at the calendar. I would think
After Labor Day.
If the 6th is the Labor Day, the 14th, that would get him or her to our... for second meeting in September.
I think that would maybe a request on our part, but I think the town clerk actually sets that date. I'm not sure, but I think so. Or maybe a week later, just to give it extra.
Any thoughts on this, Matt?
Does the clerk do the election warrant, or does the Board of Selectmen do the election?
I'm not sure about that.
We do.
You do. I think you set the...
All right.
I think September makes it... it makes sense.
Yeah, people are back to school.
After the summer is over, yeah. What's the third Tuesday of the...
It would be the 21st, I would think.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'd be a fan of the second or third Tuesday. Get past Labor Day anyway.
It might be a little more candidate-friendly to push it back to the 21st.
Yeah.
That gives them a summer if there's...
Assuming they take vacation time, whatever, it gives them time to do what they need to do.
All right. Can we vote on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I'll move that we have a special election on September 21st to fill the vacancy on the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Okay. The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Which then brings us to our normal. Number one is board reorganization and possible votes.
Along those lines, Mr. Chairman, I would say let's postpone of reorganizing until we have a full board and go from it, maybe in September.
I agree.
In the interim, I believe David will be...
Co-chair?
Vice chair.
Vice chair, however. Would it be proper to recommend a vice chair at this point? If it is, then I would nominate Tim to do that.
How do you feel about that, Tim?
Vice chair, I'd be glad to serve in that capacity again, the how you want it.
No. I'd just like to lay back in the weeds and observe things.
Well, I will. Yes, that's fine.
All right. So the motion's been made for Tim to take the position of vice chair and second it.
Yep.
Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing as none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
All right.
Excuse you from your regional responsibilities, though.
Just, yeah, wait till the new guy gets in.
Yeah, the new guy. Well, let's get him.
That's it. Yeah, welcome.
All right. So that brings us to Agenda Item Number Two, which is the bid opening for the Goboa Street land and possible votes, I believe. Mr. Wojcik has the bid.
You have one.
It's going to be a hard deliberation on one bid.
Thank God we don't have the scoring system.
You couldn't let Bob open it? He's waited patiently. Come on, Bob. Come on, Bob.
You earned it.
It's like taking him to the park and not letting him go on the right, you know?
I know.
Fingerprints are not on here yet.
I have a witness over there, look. I have a witness over there, look. It doesn't come with a prize.
No keys to a new car, Bob. Do the honors, Bob.
Give it to...
Either you do it or I'll do it, one of us.
Why don't you do it? It's from Lobosar Corporation.
Give it to the blind guy. So there's a lot of introductory material. There's bid deposit. The offer is $400,000. So what we'll do is we'll review all of this. We had asked for a number of items. Certificate of Non-Pollution is present, Certificate of Compliance, Tax Law is present, Corporate Vote is present. And there's what would appear to be a suggested purchase and sales agreement attached to the back. So I will forward this to Attorney Bowen for his review. Make sure that it's complete. Everything that we asked for is, at least is apparent in the package. This was a best price offer, so $400,000 exceeds the floor price, which was 380. So everything seems to be in order.
So the next step would be at our next meeting, or do we have to wait till then to accept the bid? Or wait till a purchase and sale agreement is done and approve? What's the next step?
I think it's going to be the best mechanism, right? So the... we can... Actually, why don't we clarify the process? Why don't... If it's all in order, I would ask for your permission to send an award letter to the bidder, an invitation to enter into a conversation for purchase and sales agreement, at which time Attorney Bowen will represent the board. And when he's satisfied, it would appear on your agenda.
And we already have a draft, so that could...
We have a draft. I know we've got one or two terms to discuss in the executive session.
I would so move.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We get purchase and sale agreement, this agreement, they have it, but not for us. They use it as a template.
Oh, is it the neighboring property as evidence of the project? I get it. I get it. That's fine, but they might still want some of the same terms.
Yeah. So we'll go to town council, who come there and...
Yeah.
Thank you, Bob.
Bob, thanks for all your hard work, bud. Now you can take a vacation for a little while or something, Bob.
At least until tomorrow.
All this detail work, you should become a pilot, you know?
Yeah. All right. The next Agenda Item is a meeting with National Grid for the Rydell Pole removal and possible votes. Do we have anybody from Grid on the call or in the audience?
There's a memo in here, Kevin, for the... they're going to meet on the 17th Thursday.
That's right. Took that to mean there was no real discussion tonight? Is that right?
Yes.
I assume that, maybe.
Well, I mean, we can at least discuss what the purpose of it behind is. You know, I know at some point in time, they look to... there may potentially be a development that comes in next door. But Mike actually had brought it up to me, and I was in agreement with him, that the pole on Rydell Street is kind of a...
It's also been a concern of the fire chief.
Yeah.
He's brought it up numerous times, so I thought it might be wise to at least address it.
I think it adds a little bit of confusion coming in and out of the road as to which side of the pole do you go on, and... I don't know. But it never hurts to have a discussion with them to see if they'd be willing to move the pole, and then if so, what associated costs go with it. I think it'd be nice to open up the end of the road and make it a little cleaner down there, anyway.
Great.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Potentially, there's a development going there. I wonder if this work needs to be done before all that gets specked out.
I think it would be done before, or potentially during or part of the site plan if there was something to go in there. But in the event that that deal falls through, I still think the pole, we should look into moving it, so just kind of take it preemptively.
Who puts the bill for that?
Well, it's Grid's pole. There... this will not be a cheap project. That pole, my understanding is at the extreme ends of the recommended distance from the other poles that connect to it. And then from that pole, the alignment of the utility wires all the way up Rydell Road is established by the position of that pole. So they can move, but I think you're going to see a multiple. You might see two poles.
Add two poles, one on either side of the street.
Might be necessary.
Which still would be better than having...
It will be better. It will frame the intersection better. So I took this intersection off the study list because this change is necessary. There's no need to study the intersection as it is, because it's not safe.
Right.
Fun stuff. Anything else? So we'll put it on the next agenda for voting on it after we have the meeting with them. Approve a junk dealer license for Bowprey Scrap LLC and possible votes. Hope I pronounced that right?
About to hear from Bowprey Scrap.
I don't believe so.
No.
Is this the one on Chojiny Road?
Yeah.
Is this inside storage? Was there a requirement that our... that that be inside? I seem to recall something in the zoning files. Am I wrong, Matt?
Well, you changed the zoning...
Yeah.
So that manufacturing can occur outside as well as inside.
Manufacturing, but in zoning, I don't believe that it's allowed inside or outside a building for a junkyard.
Your... It's not a junkyard, though. This is a permit to resell items previously owned. Yeah, but it's not a junkyard. Scrap metal.
Yeah, and I think the only thing...
This is where Suzanne says, "I hate why they call it a junk dealer."
Right. It's... but any secondhand shop, antique dealer, or anybody would have to get one of these from the Board of Selectmen to conduct that type of business.
And it looks like the only thing that we're missing out of their packet is the fire inspection report.
Yeah, that's what I was just trying to find myself.
This has been in operation for a number of years.
Yeah, it's been up there. Yep.
I've seen it once. It looked pretty well.
They haven't had a license in the past? I thought they did.
No, they do. They've been there for a while.
Yeah, so this is just a renewal.
Yeah, it's just a renewal.
I'll make a motion that we approve the junk dealer license for Bowprey Scrap LLC, and that, of course, is contingent upon the fire inspection report.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Annual reappointments and possible votes. Back to this again. Mike, on capital improvement, did we find out if anybody was going to take John's spot as he's not?
Not as of yet. So what I'm going to do, and I just haven't had a chance to do it, is I'm going to reach out to Matt and ask him for the contact email for the different department heads, so then I can just send out an email and see if anybody would volunteer, because we have openings on there.
Okay.
To see if we can get other members from... It'd be nice to get somebody from Highway. I'd like to get somebody from the school department, somebody from finance, would be helpful on the capital committee as well. So on these appointments, I don't want to be reappointed. We discussed this at a previous meeting. I've also talked to the Building and Facilities about that. And if everybody still feels the same, I'll just attend their meetings and help them through the process until they get up to speed. But I won't be voting on anything.
Yeah, I have no issue with that.
Except for the Building?
Building and Facilities, yep.
I don't see any problem with that.
I'll have to let Keith know, but I don't want to... want us to vote in on reappointing me, because I'm not going to be reappointed at all.
About the ZBA appointment?
ZBA appointment?
Staying on the ZBA?
I'm staying on the ZBA, but I'm not up. My term's up on the 20... 2023.
Yeah.
Talking about the ZBA appointments, we do have an appointment there. Because I've experienced that board for the last six years, serving with this individual, I would recommend that we don't reappoint them, and if at very least, pass over that appointment. Couple different reasons for that, for attendance and just the participation. If you want to pass over it and watch a few of the meetings yourself and make your own decisions, that's fine.
What... do we have a policy on that?
You already get five regulars, so that's just... that's an alternate.
He's an alternate anyways. And he's turned down the full position twice already. I don't think he has any intentions of being a full-time member, and I'd rather open it up and try to get a more active participant in it.
What is our policy on that? Is it three consecutive meetings meant?
Three consecutive meetings unexcused. The person is expected to resign on their own, actually, if you read under the code and conducts on the Selectmen's page of boards and committees.
And did he miss three consecutive?
Oh, yeah. He's done that. Yep. I had my... I can bring in the attendance sheet. I did have it, and I forgot it on the table when I left, so.
To me, that's an important thing, is that that alternate position is a position to be used to learn the process, to be a part of the process, with the idea that you would ascend at some point to a voting member. He's been on it for a while.
Six years.
If he hasn't jumped, I think in the fairness category, it'd probably serve us well to free that up and maybe strengthen that board with someone that wants to eventually ascend, because John, Sean, Michael, Dan, and Ron won't serve it forever.
Mm-hmm.
On the other hand, we have no other candidates. Is that correct?
For what?
The alternate.
Well, you do have other applicants that come in, but nobody's reached out to them.
Well, is that they filed an application?
Yeah, there's applications on file, and I don't know what the policy is. But people apply, and then nobody reaches out the past applications to see if they're still interested in joining. And it's not just with ZBA. It's other things.
Well, the thing to do is to see if anybody else is interested before you turn one down that is interested. We don't have any other names to appoint.
Do you have... do you have access to the old applicants for ZBA?
What, the applications?
Yeah.
No, Suzanne has those.
Suzanne has?
Suzanne has. She has all those applications.
Matt, when is Suzanne back? Monday?
If you want, just pass over on this one appointment, and we can talk about it on the next time around. And don't misunderstand me, Hal. I'm not trying to pick on anybody. It's a case of just trying to be productive in moving forward, giving it every opportunity. The last meeting that was on Saturday, that was missed. The meeting before, don't even open your packet and get prepared for the meeting. And that's important to do. You have to support the board and the committee that you're on and be prepared for it and try to help. Similar to this one here, I made the call today because I felt it was important for us to know what the process was for that. It just helps everybody.
So why don't we hold back on ZBA, Mike, when Suzanne gets back? Could ask... Reach out to her, get those applications?
No, absolutely. And in the same time, Ida, that's working with Maria down there, did look up the attendance for everybody. I said, "I want the attendance," because I'm the vice chairman of that board as well. So I asked to get the attendance of everybody, myself included, so that way we could view it, and then you could understand what I'm concerned about.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that an alternate should be required to go to all the meetings. The idea of an alternate, to me, was to fill in when somebody wouldn't go, wouldn't be available.
I thought... Can I get to that? This is my thought on that, Hal, is the alternate is as important, if not more important, than a regular member, because you have to be 100% up to speed and attend every meeting, because you can only do that... What's that thing called when you miss a meeting? The thing you fill with, Chris. You can fill out a form, say, "I watched the tape." You can only do that once during the hearing. So if you're not there for every part of it, you can't really hear the... you can't vote on the case, because you're not there. You have to be there and participate in it in order to fill in for the person that's missing.
You could have people missing too, who are regular members, and that files it up to... Let's take a look at two of the other people, anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought my understanding was that the alternate member was also there in the event they didn't have a quorum, but the alternate was there, they become a voting member.
Absolutely.
So...
It's an important role. And anyways, you know what my thoughts are on it, so whatever the board chooses to do, they do.
How do you guys feel about passing over zoning and just dealing with the rest of them tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that all right with you, Hal?
Yep.
All right. Anybody want to make a motion on the others?
Make a motion to approve all the reappointments, with the exception of Building and Facilities, just myself and that one. Sean Holland is up for Building and Facilities this year, and to pass over the ZBA appointment until the next meeting.
Second. Okay. The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now comes the fun part. Property liability, workman's compensation, insurance proposals, and possible votes, because there is nothing more action-packed than talking about insurance.
Salim, I'm surprised he wasn't on his exercise bike while he was waiting for us.
How's everybody doing?
Hello.
What, were you just doing Peloton and then hopped on with us, or?
Yeah, sorry about the call. I had nowhere else to put it, but yeah, I just gave one quick, and then you ran away. I wasn't sure.
All right. Has everybody had a chance to review both proposals that were in front of us, or in the presentations that we had last meeting?
Yep. And I had sent Matt a few questions that I hadn't. He responded back to me.
Anybody have any questions or comments, or?
Are the numbers all the same? No one sharpened a pencil or anything?
If anybody wants to answer that, they could feel free. I know David Bondi's here from Cabot. And then we've got Salim and Matt here from Gallagher, and a representative from VFIS, who can represent VFIS, to talk about IOD, if you have any questions about that. The... I think you have the numbers, and nothing's changed. The one thing that I have emphasized to Salim and VFIS through Salim is that the death benefit under IOD policy must be $500,000. It can't be any number less than that. So we'd be going with the higher number there, in terms of premium.
There's a lot of awkward silence now.
Any recommendations?
Go ahead, Dave.
Sure. Nothing better than on a Monday to talk to your insurance again. It's even worse on Tuesday.
Yeah.
It is Tuesday.
Well, thanks again for having me out. One of the questions I wanted to find out, I know there was a... I believe that there was an adjustment on the Travis Gallagher proposal in terms of replacement cost of older vehicles. So it'd be helpful for us to know how that impacted the premium.
So I'm sorry, you broke up a little bit. Was the question how the replacement cost versus actual cash value, in fact, the premium? Is that the question?
Correct. There were seven vehicles that were over your 10-year period that... You stated that Travis does not provide replacement costs. Then they went back and said they were going to make an exception to that. So I'm curious if that impacted the premium and how replacement cost is determined.
Yeah, no, thanks for the question. Answer is no, it did not impact the premium. The premium remained the same. Travelers decided to make this exception because, you know, they obviously are very eager to, you know, to ensure the town and to do business with the town. eager to, you know, to insure the town and then do business with the town. And thus, as a broker, we were able to negotiate with them to get that exception made. So the premium is unchanged and the replacement cost, the way that's determined is based off of the insured value we are giving to the vehicle for the town's vehicle schedule. So that's the same vehicle schedule that Maya and Tapper currently using.
So you're saying if the frontline truck was 500,000 on the schedule, you're going to give them 500,000 for replacement cost?
Yeah.
That's different than how Maya's coverage works. If that same truck is 500,000 when it was added, but it costs us a million tomorrow to replace it, you get the million dollars to replace that truck. That's a significant difference across fire trucks and those DPW vehicles.
If, if that's the case, why would a town ever have to go out and buy a new?
Well, you have to have a, you have to have an accident.
Has to be a covered loss.
Yeah.
Well, what about the rust? Right? Wearing tear is not a covered loss.
No, to be in an accident and a streetlight falling on a.
Thought I found a loophole for fire trucks.
Yeah, that would be nice.
You could call the chief and be like, "All right, uh, that one's coming to it. Go hit a tree with that."
We've had, we've had fires in fire departments where trucks are driving out on fire and we're always raising eyebrow on that.
Well, it's a fire truck.
Yeah, but, but they have these electrical fires and, so.
Thank God they're there, they know how to put it out.
Exactly. Thank God they're there, right. So that was a, I think, a huge difference on the P and C side. Other piece, you know, there was, I think, roughly a $92,000 difference in premium. This prepayment credit with our piece, I know we sent over late this afternoon before I ran out, the proposal for the IOD program. There are significant differences in that coverage as well. Not to mention, go back in the P and C, there, there are different deductibles under, under the professional. We're at 75, they're at 10. They talked about, when we were here last, about higher limits on, under the professional liability. The area where you're can, the area of great pain for the town is in property-related claims. I didn't hear them bring any service to help assist the town with addressing those claims. The loss pick that, when we did this renewal, as I mentioned last time, didn't contemplate the full exposure of the town hall claim. And there was a more recent claim at the high school at the end of April, which right now is about 70,000, you know, that we're dealing with. And that's not in this pick. We talked about the training services. Maya specializes with municipalities. We have over 380 municipal entities in our program. Core members are probably roughly about 320. Those are towns and cities across the state. From 2015 to now, we've trained over 240 employees in Douglas on the whole gambit of safety training. Boshers training, professional liability training, confined space, legal updates, just to name a few. During that same period, the town has received grants from us to go out and purchase safety equipment. That's roughly about $63,000. Some of those items have been confined space equipment, trench safety equipment. We've done things where we put in security systems and some different buildings. This year, in the rewards program, the town earned just over $10,000 in that program. That program has netted the town savings upwards of $165,000 since participating in that. There's two benefits with that program. One, you get to see the immediate results of the, of, of the credit. But also, you're implementing good risk management practices and it's helping control the claims. You know, Maya, as I said when we met last, from fiscal '18 to now, we've paid out $1.2 million in losses. We haven't walked away from the town. We continue to work with the town in your program. We're committed to partnering with the town on your program. Commercial carrier, the Travels is, may not take those same steps when, when you absorb that many types of claims. Questions on the P and C property liability piece?
I do have a question, and I know it's kind of hard to divine how that works. If you took the assumption that our claim history that we have right now, like, there's no difference in it. We continue to have the same claim activity next year or the year after. What kind of an impact would that have on our premiums? Like, do you see us staying relatively flat based off of an existing claim history, or do you see this just continuing to go up as we seem to be higher risk?
It would, right now, the marketplace as a whole is turned upside down. There's certain lines of coverage that are impacting that. One is property-related claims. That's not just here in Massachusetts, that's countrywide. Other coverage that's really stressed, and we all hear this every night, is, is these cyber attacks that are happening across country. Professional liability claims are going to be stressed. We talked a little bit about it last time we, we were here, where law enforcement liability claims are going to come under, I guess, a tax under a word, but that's going to be tested. But we are already seeing employment practice-type claims be impacted by that as well. In the municipal setting, specifically school environment, there's a lot of abuse-related type claims, you know, that we deal with. So you're going to see, the market is shifting. The, if you have good experience, you may see a 0% to 5% increase. That's if you have good experience. If you have adverse experience, it's going to be more than that. It's going to be based upon, things that drive your experience with us is obviously changes in exposures, but also your loss experience. Does that answer the question?
Yeah.
Other questions for me on the P and C before we jump into the IOD?
Just want to make it clear, I haven't elevated that situation at the high school to a claim yet. That's still an incident report.
Well, we, it's, we have it, so I'm not sure where that is, but.
We've made you aware of it, but we weren't asking yet for it to be treated as a claim. There isn't the end.
For an annual basis?
Yeah.
Excuse me?
Nobody writes two years?
Well.
Yeah, our policy, the entire program is, all the, all the members in the group have the same program structure. It goes from 7-1, plus you. The limits, different communities will have different deductible structures based upon their appetite to self-insure the risks or claims experience. Some may have higher or lower umbrella limits. And that's really, again, depending upon outside contract requirements that you may have with other vendors. They may want to see the town have higher umbrella limits.
Kevin, I got a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
The, you said there was 165,000 in savings. What was that?
It is, each year, the program gets designed. It's called the Maya Rewards Program. It's based upon the premium that you get. It's broken down by line of coverage. That's why Gene always asks me, "Break down the premium for us by line of coverage and by department." So the town does various risk management activities. I think one of the folks here that works closely with Ed is Adam Inferno. By doing different activities from July 1st through the end of May, the town will receive credit. When we send you out the invoice in June, you'll see what that rewards credit is. The towns can either apply it towards the renewal, or you can take the money back and do what you want with it.
So I'm a little confused on that because if you're, if there's a $92,000 spread right now, so you're going to end up being $72,000 cheaper?
Nope.
No, that's off of their original cost.
No, because he's presenting you with a time series, which in some cases goes back to 2016 or 2017. So he's giving you a sum total of several years.
An aggregate amount of years.
And the 92 would be a one-year difference.
Okay.
With the credits that, between the rewards credit, the workers' comp dividend, the prepayment credit, and the participation credit that was declared at the annual meeting, the difference is roughly about 70,000 right now. If you're looking at straight premium. But again, you've got to remember how they just described replacement cost. Replacement cost is only going to be what they see on the fleet schedule. 500,000 for a fire truck, that's not what it's going to cost to, to replace your frontline truck now. If it goes away tomorrow, it's total loss, we pay, let's say it's 750,000, we pay that. So $75,000 that you think you're saving is not there.
We talked about that at the last meeting because he brought up that he, he, they replaced a fire truck somewhere for a million dollars.
That was us, yeah. It's 1.2.
So that, that subject, we did talk about that, so.
The real litmus test would be to see if we had to replace ladder one, because those are the really expensive trucks. So I'd be curious to see what that sits on the schedule as versus true replacement cost on it.
When we added it, what the value was at that time, that was replacement cost, whenever you purchased it. So there's seven trucks, so that, there's seven vehicles, I think, three in the DPW or vice versa, three in the fire, four in the DPW. Other questions on the?
I just have a question for Salim, and I, I guess I'm confused. You guys are using the words replacement cost, but it seems like what you're actually would be providing is a purchase cost.
Agreed value, I would think, better describe what they're.
Agreed value?
These. For instance, Pierce 1, the ladder truck, it's on our schedule right now for $497,000.
Yeah, you're not replacing a ladder truck for that.
That's 2005, when it got added. So that's probably in line back then that the truck was worth. Is that what it came directly from, the R and D 1? So now, it's, I know we just did it in a town nearby, it's close to 1.2 million.
You guys aren't saying anything? Are you agreeing with that characterization?
He can't see you.
I don't know if he realized you were talking about Salim.
Sorry, I'm, I'm having a hard time here. Can you say that again, Matt?
Are you hearing what David's saying? Do you agree with his characterization of what Travels is offering here?
Oh, just as a, you know, as a way to clarify and, you know, in transparency, I just pulled up the, the actual Travels language from the, from the policy. So I'll just read that, and, and that should bring clarity to the situation. So this is how they, um, how they describe replacement costs under their coverage. The cost of repairing the damaged property with other property of like-kind and quality, the cost of replacing the damaged stolen property with other property of like-kind and quality, the cost of replacing the damaged or stolen property with comparable new property at the time of loss, or the limits shown as applicable to the auto in the schedule above. So if there were, you know, based on that, there were certain vehicles that are listed on the schedule, you know, that, well, to David's point, are listed at, at 400,000. And the cost to the town to replace those is more like six or 700,000, I'm kind of starting on the number. If that's something that you wanted us to go back to Travels to and say, you know, can you insure that for 700,000, we certainly could, but we were, we were going up and so Travels going up to the, the vehicle schedule that we were given by the town.
But I, I think what we'd be, to be comparable, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, the MIAA policy is, I would call it fair market value on new replacement. So if I had a $400,000, you know, if it's on the schedule at $400,000 for our ladder truck, but to actually go out and buy a new one at 1.2 million, that the claim would give us a check for 1.2 million dollars to go and buy a new ladder truck.
Correct.
So, can I add that up?
Yeah.
Would that be a 2021 ladder truck, or would that be a, whatever this thing is, a 2000 ladder truck?
2005 or something.
2005. Because what he just explained was like-kind. So if you're driving an 86 Hyundai, you're getting an 86 Honda.
We bought this town a new ladder truck.
Yep.
Whatever it costs to replace it, that's what you got.
So you wouldn't make the attempt to try to find another 2005 Quint fire truck?
If not.
Well, I mean, it's, it's a fair question because that's what, what the language was saying.
In this case here, go ahead. No, sorry, Dan, I'm just going to say that, that the way the Travels language reads, to me, is it the same way that, that Maya would, would replace one true vehicle, right? You're, you're replacing it with a, with a vehicle of like-kind and quality, which is the exact same way of being insured with Travels.
That's, that's not how I, I understand that.
Yeah, like-kind and quality says you just lost an old five, we're going to find you a new old five.
It's going to be equivalent to that, that 2005 truck.
Yeah.
That's not the form here. We replaced the truck with a brand-new truck.
I would be more comfortable having that in writing that actually states that.
Yeah.
It's fine.
Well, just, so it's not.
I think Gallagher was saying that it was, if it was a 1994 truck, they'd go out and find you a 1994 truck similar rather than brand-new.
Or like-kind and quality, yeah.
Yeah.
We insured the, the vehicles to the limits that were provided on the schedule. If we want to go to a harder limit, we can adjust the schedule and, and adjust that with Travels and may change the premium, but not significantly.
I would think if you're insuring it for 500,000, you're going to go up to 1.2. That's a big swing. So there's going to be a difference in, in premium. And that's not just on one, that's on all. And that, that's just on, we're talking about these trucks here. They have, they can insure the vehicles that are 10 years and younger at replacement cost. So that's the same methodology they're going to use. I say it this way, if you have a, a frontline police cruiser that goes out today, gets total, let's say it's 45 grand, and of course it's 50 grand tomorrow, we give you 50 grand to replace that cruiser, bless you.
Thank you.
So we're just talking about the vehicles that are 10 years and older. Their definition for replacement cost and like-value applies to all the vehicles that they're going to be giving you replacement cost at.
It's not as big of a hit to do replacement cost off of one of the cruisers because they're relatively new and I think every two to three years, we're getting new cruisers up.
Right.
It's those, the big-ticket items are usually sitting at the, at the fire department because they just, they cost a hell of a lot more to go and buy them.
What's the price differential between?
Johnny Stracks are a chief Vila.
70,000?
I think all in, it'd be 70.
Yeah, and we're just talking about this piece. When we talk about the IOD, there's some significance there as well.
Just a question on the credits, and not to get too in the weeds, but there's probably a lot of programs out there that would provide a credit that we speak, that we're speaking of today. Is the town doing a yeoman's job, a great job in getting every sort of credit we possibly can, or is there just so much out there that we're really not tapping?
In, in the Maya program?
Yeah.
I would say you're doing, uh, more than most. You're doing better than, Susan and Adam do a really good job maxing out their effort. You know, Ed, the school was very supportive when we installed all those sensors in all four schools. So that's been working pretty well. I know Adam just talked with Ed today. They, Adam was asking Ed, are there more sensors? He wants to put them in other town buildings. So I would, Adam really goes, he's known at the workshops that we have, you know, so he, he knows the Maya team well. So you would like me to clarify replacement cost, how we do it?
Oh, I, I personally would. Um, what's the timeframe for this, Matt?
You're running out of time. Right? I'm looking at you, you're, the current policy, looks like it kind of ends at midnight on June 30th.
June 30th, tick-tock, yep, is when it comes. So that's just questions on this piece.
Can I, so, Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, because you might remember, that Quint is not new to us. It's a used ladder truck. So when we got it, it was already, when we got it, it was probably a $900,000 truck. And it got valued at 497. So would you, you guys are actually going to replace that if it cracks up with a So would you, you guys are actually going to replace that if it cracks up with a 1.2 million dollar Quint?
Whatever it, I know we just did it in a town a little further west.
How old was the truck that that died?
Older than yours. It was older than yours. There's two other, there's three, there's two other trucks besides the Pierce. There's an International truck, 2001, valued at 230 right now. That's at replacement cost. A 1999 International, 157, that's. Those are, these are just the older vehicles over over 10. There's, anything that qualifies for replacement cost here is at replacement cost. It's the way we do it. So if it costs us a dollar more tomorrow to replace it, that's what you get. And then there's three in the DPW department that are over 10 as well.
Of course, the question is how liberal are you when if there's an accident, are you to be totaled in analogy to to our own cars? You know, it could be repaired or it could be totaled if it's frame damage, et cetera. So.
If it's going to be unsafe, we're not going to put anyone at risk and and have you operate. Because two things, we would be on the hook liability wise, and we also cover the town for injured on duty coverage. We wouldn't want to put.
Just think how common it is to cross over the threshold to be totaled, you know?
I've always found it like, at least on personal use, and even when I worked for Mobile and doing heavy equipment for a little while, as soon as structural damage came in, it was done. Truck was totaled and sent away.
The frame.
Yeah.
What, what in the event that it's a repairable truck? What do we do for a truck to fill in that space?
In a lot of cases, you reach out to one of your surrounding towns and they let you.
No, I didn't know if there was anything within.
No lend, fire truck lenders.
Mutual aid.
Get a loan.
Yeah, loan or fire truck.
There's not many ladder trucks around.
Valid question.
On loan, out of my garage.
You have to, you have to consider.
No, no, it's, yeah, no.
So.
We, if if we think it's a total loss, we're going to expedite it as fast as we can to get it back. We understand that these are critical pieces of equipment, you know, that not only take care of the town, but also, you know, safety wise.
Ask Matt a question?
Yeah.
How much time do you need for the renewal? Two weeks from today is the 29th.
When you guys decide what you want to do, I think we're signing paperwork. I don't really think there's a lot.
So we have a few questions and clarity on on what we need. I'm sure that some other stuff will come out of it. So is this something we need to do tonight to decide on it? Because there's a, it's not 100% straightforward as to, we're given an opinion, but do you have anything in writing that clarifies that you would get actual replacement cost? Actual replacement?
To your point too is, I mean, I think if we are going to push this to the next meeting, I'd want a lot of clarity on the Traveler's side of it, of I want like for like coverage, to where if it's like true replacement value and then language that sits behind that, and then if there's a premium increase that's associated, we need to see that reflected.
Clearly, it's a different choice if that premium increase is $5,000 or if it's 15,000 or 20,000 dollar increase, right? That would be a significant.
Yeah.
Conversation. And I guess I'm coming into the meeting tonight, I really kind of thought that what Travelers came back to us with was exactly like to like. And that because the same terminology was used, replacement. And, you know, what? How much do we want to burden a conversation? We use the, it's a term of art. Replacement means I want to go and get you what you have. So I want all of that clarified before I, I'm not even willing to make a recommendation at this point because that's a really important point for the town. And I mean, I, you have to balance that against what is the actual risk of loss?
Sure.
And.
Self-insuring by saving the money.
That and, you know, just how often are these things occurring versus, for instance, the Gallagher package is somewhat richer in terms of the breadth and scope of the cyber insurance. That basically, it's almost a doubling of our coverage. Sitting where I do, I think a cyber attack is a much more likely event than our ladder truck falling in the water and having a qualifying event that leads to replacement value. That's just me. But the reason why we're doing this process is to to figure out what's the best value for the town of Douglas. And there are still some pieces missing. I would have known to ask more questions if the if the term replacement value, if I'd known that it wasn't really being used the same way. I'm going to short circuit a little bit of David's presentation where, on my own analysis, I really just am not comfortable changing our IOD coverage. I think you can get Chubb either through Gallagher or through Cabot. But what has been proffered to us, while it is a less expensive policy, it is, it is nothing like what we have on many accounts. I think the one thing I really like about VFIS is a somewhat broader definition and understanding of infectious disease because we've, the town of Douglas has taken a leadership position in our contractual obligations to public safety. We extended a presumption for infectious disease for IOD purposes that no other municipality that I'm aware of has done. Maybe that's changed more recently after COVID, but we did this before COVID without reference to COVID because we felt as a negotiating team on the management side that sending first responders into a disease situation was no less than saying, sending them into a fire or a hot situation with a with an active aggressor. It can kill you just the same. It might feel different, it might take a different period of time, but you're just as dead from a horrible disease as you would be from a gunshot or for some of fire. So we can't ask people to make those kinds of sacrifices without having some sort of backup of insurance, is to stand by our people. And that's why we took the position we did.
Death by disease is worse than?
It's probably a lot worse, I'm guessing. It takes longer. But when I, when I looked at the two, I just didn't see them as being in the same ballpark. And I'd love to save money, but it's also about what we're getting for what we buy. It, but it wouldn't change the fundamental, it would, it narrows the difference, but there would still be a financial difference and there would still be a breadth and scope of coverage difference on one side versus the other. This vehicle issue is probably one of the more, the bigger outstanding doubts in my mind. It, it doesn't compute with me that an insurer would say, we're going to pay a million two to replace something you guys only spent 497 getting used. It doesn't, I know he says he's done it, but it doesn't, doesn't sound like a sound business practice, but.
Well, Maya's been around for a while, so they.
This must be.
But that speaks to how common the loss is.
It's not such a common event, I don't think.
Yeah.
It happens more, that's why, well, that's why we went out and we bought a driving simulator. Because it, it does happen more often than not. It may not be frontline fire truck.
Cruisers get creepy all the time.
Cruisers, DPW trucks, they get totaled, we go out and buy them. So we do driver trained. The simulator has been in the town of Douglas. There are other differences in the IOD program. The IOD program that VFIS is proposing, yes, the premium is X, but they're introducing to you a $10,000 aggregate deductible, which means the town is on the hook for the first $10,000 of the claims for the policy year until it gets met. There's a 60-day deductible for indemnity coverage, meaning your lost wages, your self-insuring for the first two months of every injured on duty claim you have. There is no such waiting period with our.
To Matt's point, I think the IOD is far more important. Like you're dealing with people, not equipment.
Yep.
And the cyber insurance, do you see the policy cover paying ransomware extortion fees?
Yep.
You never pay the fee. You never pay the fee.
That's going to be something where you're going to see both in the municipal space and the commercial space. There will be cutbacks in coverage that are going to happen because they are looking to see what sort of controls and access points of vulnerability that you have. We're seeing that across all lines, all types of risk.
But the standard policy.
Do we have many IOD?
You know, they won't let you.
Incidents and.
They'll take your money, but they're not going to recover your equipment.
Okay. Yeah, but will they pay?
Maybe a year maybe.
Yeah, and most of them would fall on a 60-day exclusion. I think in the past five years, I'm thinking the claim was 2018, but we actually settled it all up in 2019, fiscal 19. I think that one went beyond 60 days. That was about $76,000.
The indemnity was about 66,000.
Yeah.
The total occurrence, a little north of that.
It's not uncommon, Selectman Fitzpatrick, for us to have an IOD claim that would be two or three weeks long or a month long. And the person is ordered out of work by their physician, and our physician agrees. And so we pay the, we pay the employee what they would have earned. And then we file the claim with Chubb through Cabot. And then we receive the money back as a reimbursement that closes to the general fund at the end of the year. So it's the strange mechanism, but so sometimes you'll see things carried over from one year to the next. It all depends when all the paperwork is processed and when things are paid out. How does IOD work for, sorry, David, but I'll just keep. There's an expense when somebody goes out on IOD because we don't lose service. So if a ranked firefighter is no longer coming to work as they're out IOD, we backfill that shift. We either take somebody else and put them in overtime, or we have per diem. So we we kind of lose both ways if the, it's not, if the costs aren't covered for those 60 days because we're, we're paying to bring somebody in and we're not getting reimbursed for that, that first 60 days.
So through Maya, we get reimbursed, but through this other proposal, we don't?
You would, but only after a 60-day exclusion.
After 60 days.
Yeah.
And that's through the Gallagher program?
That's, that's, that would be VFIS, which is the suggestion. The, both policies are similar that they're capped, that when they do start paying, they're capped at $1,500 a week. A fair number of our employees earn more than that. So we, we're still on the hook for the overage, so.
Another difference there, they cap the weekly indemnity at two years. Ours goes to age 65. One other thing that I would like to add, I don't know, you also have through the Maya program, a free employee assistance program. I don't know where that falls within the Gallagher proposal.
You guys, I'm going to look to you because it's really not appropriate to have me carrying your water. Can you hear us here?
So I can comment on that?
Yeah, you're, you're, you're going in and out, but Matt, Matt, why don't you comment on it? I can have more time here.
Maybe he wants to come up. Come on up.
Yeah, come on up.
Yeah.
No fighting at the table.
No, please, no. I save that for my kids when I get home.
So to comment on, oh, sorry, go ahead, Saleem.
Hey, Matt, it's a little quick if you could. I just want, I want to be able to, I want to be sure I can, I can hear a little bit of the meeting code. So do you mind just calling me on your cell and dialing in?
Sure thing.
So and putting me on speaker, I think that would, that would help.
He may have to shut his microphone up.
Just make sure when he calls you on the cell that you mute your microphone on your end, otherwise you're going to start getting all kinds of a feedback issue.
Okay. Can I have a minute?
Yep. So to. To comment on that 60-day deductible, so that is only a $1,500 weekly benefit that you're going to get from the Chubb policy. So that can only really max out in 60 days. That's essentially eight weeks. So that's going to be a total of $12,000. So the upfront savings from the VFIS coverage is about $20,000. In the past five years, you've only had one claim go over that $12,000 weekly, or excuse me, over 60 days, and it was for $74,000. So that first 12,000 will come out of the town's budget, and then the remaining $62,000 comes from VFIS's pocket. In 2016, you had no claims for that weekly expense benefit. In 2017, you had no claims for that weekly expense benefit. In 2015, it was 9,000. In 2019, it was 8,000. And in 2020, it was 4,000. So you're saving $20,000 upfront, and then that on the back end, you're filling that. But in those few years where you've had lower claims, you can reserve that money and you can look at the total cost of risk, and in the long run, you'll be saving.
If we had five or six claims on average, and the average employee makes 1,500 or more, how would it be that low? $4,000 in 2020?
These are, these are from the loss runs that Cabot provided.
Yeah, I was actually asking Matt.
Because they don't all last that long.
Yeah, okay.
You could have somebody out two days on IOD.
Yeah, so that's what it, okay.
Past the, the ones I I don't really like, you know, obsess about these, I'm aware of them. The ones that are most familiar to me from the last year, I think we had a couple of people that may have been out a couple of weeks.
Well, the other piece, so the benefit period is two, is two years. So there are times when folks will be out of work longer than two years, even if you try to move them to disability retirement, then that burden goes back to you.
And one thing I'd like to point out, just on the VFIS coverage, there is no age restriction on the coverage, so the Chubb form only goes up to 65. And the VFIS form has no age limit. So if you have any police or fire that are over that age, they'll still be covered under our form, and they would not be covered under the Chubb form.
Fire, you wouldn't see.
Pretty age limit, but the, the, I think what you were saying was if somebody had 40 years old, went out, then they would be covered until they were 65. But under the other one, if they have 40 years old, they'd be covered to 42? Is that what you were saying?
Correct. And the way the law dictates, you, the municipality, are obligated to make me whole for medical in-laws wages, no matter what the limit or the benefit period exists.
Yeah, really, there's, there's no contest here. These, they're totally not close. The Chubb is a much better choice. Thing is, the policy can be placed by either brokerage. So you're not tied to losing Chubb if you pick the Gallagher piece for the rest of it. They're just aware of what your choices are. You could make Gallagher the broker of record and they could place the business on a Chubb.
They can't. We have a exclusive with Chubb. Chubb is our exclusive underwriter for the, for the IOD.
That's correct.
Yep. Matt, I'll just.
That isn't what you said the first time you presented to us. That is absolutely not what you said.
No.
So you learned something in the last.
That was, that was referring to the, the standalone property coverage for the.
No, no, we weren't even interested in that. So they didn't even, they didn't even quote us on the property side. What I distinctly, if I find it in, the conversation is going to get real awkward if I find this in your presentation where you said it.
It's not this year's month, weeks packet.
Yeah, there is one.
Not in ours.
Although it may, it was a verbal comment, so it may not be in here. No, I was into that. I wouldn't make this stuff up. You know, it's just like, it's so crazy to even think that somebody could make that up. I heard somebody say, and I'm not going to spend any more time for the board's time, but if, if you can't place the Chubb business, you can't place the Chubb business.
I know that's what you believe because you've said it to me multiple times in the conversations I've asked you. Talk to you.
It was actually kind of an important consideration.
Yeah.
So I think my, off on my general thought process on this is that we want clarity regarding the vehicle replacement portion of the quotes that are out there.
Now we need clarity on this IOD.
Can we quote it by, I guess my other question is.
Well, if you have an exclusive, you have an exclusive, right? I mean, I don't really think there's. And I don't really think there's, no arguing that.
Can we leave IOD behind and hold two different policies?
That's a question for you. For Cabot Risk.
Well, I guess I would say we should get clarity on replacement costs. I think that is a big issue.
Yep.
Then what's the next question on that?
So if, let's just say, all things considered, that, you know, the clarity's there that we needed, and we wanted to move some of the business over to those folks, but we wanted to retain IOD through MIAA, is that an option?
I'll have to ask the questions if they want to do it.
I'm not leaning one way or the other, but just, you know, because that is kind of a big concern.
Oh, I, I definitely would think so. And the other piece, I would say, what service are they bringing to help address the property claims? Again, we talked about the professional piece. Our program is designed to assist the towns address those issues.
Can I just shut in here?
Yeah.
Can I have a second?
Yep.
Sorry, sorry about the technical setback. Just wanted to address the IOD piece. If, if the town does feel that, that the Travelers program for the property liability and import risk, you know, is strong urban, but the IOD with Chubb, out of form VFIS, then, you know, I don't see why our both Gallagher and Cabot couldn't place new policy or new program, I should say. So I know that the law is, we happen to do that, happen to break it out, and then adjust our, our program accordingly. That's, that's not an issue. On Cabot, and Cabot's, you know, pricing is a full, full search program, so I don't see why they'd be able to place all the policy under half, even if they have the rest of it in place of mine. So that's, that's, that's one piece. On the
So wait, hold on, Salim, for a second. Who's the exclusive with? Is it with Cabot or is it with MYA?
Chubb is exclusive.
Chubb is exclusive to?
The Cabot-MYA program.
The Cabot-MYA program.
Correct.
So Dave, are you saying that if, that you would be able to place the IOD with Chubb for the town administration if they weren't in rent?
I'm not saying that. I'm saying that's a decision that I have to, I don't have the authority to answer that right now. I have to go ask someone who sits above me inside my paycheck, so.
Has anybody done that? Any other town done that?
Yep. There's other towns that are outside the program.
I mean, do we, those are the two things that we kind of want answered.
Absolutely.
Tim, you agree?
Yeah, no, I do. Forced to make a decision today, I think I could and sleep well with it, but more information's better.
I think if town administrators comfortable with waiting until the 29th to our next meeting, unless we need to do something ahead of time.
I'm not at all comfortable recommending anything tonight.
No, I mean, as far as holding off until
Completely disappeared.
My next I'm just looking at, you have the 30th for a cutoff point, and to make sure you have time to do it, do what you need to do.
Yeah, that's what I had just said. We can do that.
It'd be helpful for us to see a copy of the Travelers property form, in the auto form, so we can compare to, if there's any coverage extensions. A lot of these they were referencing, it's the same as MYA, same as MYA. So I just would not want to have the same opportunity to look through that to see if there are any other differences.
That's fair.
Sure. Definitely, that's fair. I think we can set up a specific policy form, so they can be able to open it, and we'll get clarity on the, on the replacement costs language. And then really, the last question I want to touch on was, David, I think you mentioned you said, you know, that initial of, of, you know, whether looking Gallagher or looking Travelers or as far as, you know, loss control bills or nothing that, you know, specifically around property claims. And you mentioned that that might have a lot in that, in that area to try to help the town and, and the rest of the drivers. You know, I, I think, I think that the town's law history, the law basically is, is, maybe some of that, some of those factors aren't really working well enough because, I think the, the, I think truly highlight that as something that, that is being done as well, I think it's kind of counterintuitive based on, on the town's loss experience. As far as what the We have, we have a, a loss control team, and a, and a team that's a engineer that we can deploy, and go off to various locations, and we get 20 or so, and, and give officers with, with people, or anyone there, to just point out that, that, that they, they, they improve the town's loss control. So that's, that will become, we're going to encourage standard part of loss control, so it's virtual, we have, we have training modules that we can offer, and, well, loss control is really much possible, and I think that, I think that it is available to Matt. So I'm sure you can see, but we do, we do have three sources, so just travelers, so both Gallagher travelers, you know, both Gallagher, both Travelers are, are, they have a, 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 a,[1060.12]
and experience, and just insight. Because we have this wide panoply of newer buildings, older buildings. I've got my pencil very sharp on this situation at the high school because if it's up to 70 grand, I'm already moderately annoyed with the whole thing, but, you know, one of... There's an investigation that needs to be done there, and it's not really the insurance carrier's responsibility to do it. It's management's responsibility. In this case, it's a school building, so it's the school committee's responsibility to inquire into a whole range of things. You know, why are all these invoices over $600,000 for five years? How did we end up with this particular form of claim? Is there any other angle here in terms of workmanship, product liability, or other issues that may be real...
Issues, things like that.
There's a whole bunch of things that really need to be... These things keep coming to a head because the management hasn't been there. And it's not entirely fair to say that an educational administration should know how to run a building with all the complicated systems. It's not the standard I'm holding the business manager or anybody else to that. But we have to come up and confront the reality that we have four buildings over there, we have however many on our side, six, seven buildings. And they all have specific needs, and they all have specific weaknesses, and if they're not addressed with a thoughtful plan, we're going to constantly be playing catch-up and asking people who don't have the native skill set to be responsible for things that are over their heads and too complicated. In some cases, it is management style. I mean, if I had those four buildings and I knew I was coming into freezing weather, I would absolutely positively have somebody there all day, every day. I just would. And the sensors wouldn't have been an ask, it would have been there because you can't possibly watch every pipe and every valve in however many 100,000 square foot building. So, yeah, there's some cultural changes we need to do on our side, but at the end of the day, what the claims are drawing up isn't... Is a glaring gap in our overall skill set as a management team, both on the school side and the municipal side. We've got fantastic people who work very, very hard on what they know how to do, but there's another layer above it, which is systems knowledge and technology, and I just don't... I don't see it. And you have to be willing to admit your weaknesses as an organization in order to fix them, and that's kind of where we are. I know the superintendent has had a private conversation with me about, you know, there's a couple of things we should try to share going forward, and facilities is one of them. We wouldn't lose any of the great people we have. We would be adding someone who really gets it.
I would think that with an experienced person in that position, the money that you would save over relying on vendors to tell you what's wrong would pay for that.
It wouldn't come up in the insurance. It's going to come up in the repair bills.
You said 600,000 over the last five years, but what has it been since last July 1st and now?
I think now we're up to 185.
So you could get a pretty well-qualified person.
I think so. I think my concern is, I mean, this is off-topic anyway, but my concern would be when you're seeing this kind of invoicing that's coming through, having it not raise a red flag and get in front of it is just as concerning to me as the claims themselves. But, I mean, long story short, on the insurance portion of itself is that until we start getting into better practices, we can anticipate having continued claims, which is bad for us overall as a town. And I think the things that we want from the vendors are some clarity on the issues that we've thrown forward, sharing with this gentleman the schedule on vehicle replacement costs, and then an answer on the IOD portion of it that we'd asked. Is there anything I'm missing in that?
No, that's good. Difficult to find somebody with all the skill sets you'd need, too, in one person.
We were going to send you one now.
I'd be the least...
Overall, general now...
You'd think those bills are reasonable if I was around.
But just to know what you're looking at, they don't have to actually know how to fix it. But if they know what they're looking at, and I think Matt might even have one or two applications that came through that didn't work out for something else, that may be a potential.
Sometimes just knowing who to call helps. Like saying, there could be a problem. Who's going to call for this?
Yeah, but that's why we're in the position we're in now, is everybody, hey, how you doing, Kevin? How's it going today? Yeah, I'm back to fix the leak. It gets very complacent, and, you know, the trust level goes very high, and now you're no longer questioning that.
You want a proactive person.
Yeah, Mike, I just blew all the pipes out of your book.
I haven't even had a chance. I was going to ask Matt just to look through some of the invoices, because I don't know exactly what I'm looking at, and see if it's a repetitive problem. If we're fixing the same pipe four times during the course of the year, then there's an issue.
At Highway, every single vehicle has a maintenance record in the file. We know exactly what we're spending on every single vehicle, and where it is in its life cycle, and what's going to come up next, and how much that's potentially going to cost. And it gives us a sense, for capital planning purposes, what we need to do. And we need that same level... I know Adam takes assiduous notes on all the buildings he manages, but I don't think it's a knock on him at all. I mean, his training isn't facilities management, or HVAC, or, you know, emergency backup power systems. That's not his bailiwick. He does the best he can to help us get through these issues. And we just need somebody who can be really adept with it.
Right. He puts 100% effort into it, but there's only so much that he can do. He's spread a little thin on the different things.
Well, he keeps us open, right? Keeps the place open, he keeps the place secure, the systems work, and that's been a challenge at times. And like I say, this is nothing but compliments to him for it. This is something different. This is not fixing an airplane, it's understanding what needs to be addressed to keep the airplane safe all the time when it flies, and that's a different skill set.
So what we're going to get to at some point would be, since we can afford to fix it four times, I guess we can really afford to fix it right the first time.
All right. That was far afield, but it was a necessary conversation. Is that to-do list pretty much done? Does everybody on either side of this thing know what they need to do? Do you want to set a meeting now so they know when they might be on the hook to talk again?
Next meeting.
Make whatever work, it doesn't matter to me.
You don't have another meeting?
Tell them the next one's, yeah, 29th, right?
We only do two, so let's have one on...
First and third Tuesday.
I'm not here Tuesday next week, so we do...
I would respectfully suggest you push your July meeting up to June 29th, and skip the meeting after July 4th.
I like it.
All right, I second that.
What Matt said.
I get to be popular for five minutes.
Does that work for you, 29th?
Yeah, that's great.
Invite these gentlemen to be at the...
I think so. I think we learn every time that all you guys are around.
You guys feel up to a trek back to Douglas on the 29th?
But we have this wonderful video conferencing platform that we can put you on.
I'm from Franklin, so I'm right down the road.
All right.
I live a little closer.
A little close, all right.
Not Smithfield.
No, yeah, don't get mistaken with Smith.
If you want to come in person and bring your Peloton bike, you're welcome to.
All right. I think that would be a person, and then I'll call at 5:30, so, you know, a couple days.
So we'll end up with definitive wording on the replacement costs?
Yes, and a definitive answer on the IOD, which were our two big sticky points.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Next time, don't bring the rain with you.
I can't promise that. I hope not.
Take care.
Thanks.
Apparently there was a beautiful rain though.
It's a Mary.
It's my... Mom saw a fit and shit, pick it up.
Well, that was nice of her. All right. Approved minutes and possible votes.
Make a motion that we approve the special agenda meeting minutes of May 25.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Make a motion that we approve the May 25 executive session minutes, and we'll retain all.
Second. Excellent. Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Your report, Mr. Administrator.
Well, believe it or not, this conversation tonight was refined a great deal during the last week from countless emails back and forth with questions from members of the board, and I guess not entirely complete answers from the two vendors, but this is a really big decision, and it's worth it. It's worth every last... And I think if you're an outside observer, I'm hoping that people see, this is how government works. If you're a one person sitting alone in an office, not vetting your thoughts with other people, you might arrive at one conclusion, but when there are four selectmen and the vendors are going back and forth, there's a productive conversation about what is really good for the town. It's time well spent, in my opinion, and I thank you for your patience, but that's been an awful lot of activity around this particular decision. The rest of the story for personnel, we closed two postings yesterday. So we have a posting for a full-time principal clerk in the community development office, which closed yesterday, and today, actually, the part-time position that was created in the budget for the Board of Health, basically helping out transfer station stakeholders, and so both those positions closed. I know there's... The Board of Health position was posted internally. We have one applicant, the... At least one. And then the other position, we received three qualified applicants that will be interviewed on Monday, with the hopes of getting somebody up and running. The other part of the plan for community development is, you know, looking at that salary line and talking to the finance director about how we need to do this. We still need a planning professional who can review a set of plans and give comments to the planning board that will be of assistance in their deliberations. And we've had CMRPC under contract, and we made the move, I think at special town meeting, to move some of the funds down into the expense line from compensation so that we could pay that contract. And that contract comes to a close on June 30th. So I'm entertaining a proposal from a professional to serve as an interim community development director. She's... She is to the world of planning what Jim Purcell is to the world of town administrators. She comes in, she helps you out for a couple of months, sets up your systems, makes sure you're healthy, and then you do your posting. You don't have to rush to hire someone if they're not a good fit. You just keep looking. But meanwhile, the work is getting done by somebody who's very good at it and doesn't want to be permanent. So I'm...
Appreciate her name.
Eve Tapper.
It also allows you to create a program.
Right.
System and a policy.
Yeah, with a fresh set of eyes, with no vested interest in the outcome, other than good process. So I spoke to her, interviewed her at length yesterday, and have received her proposal today. I'll be vetting that with the chair of the planning board and other members, certainly the chair of the zoning board, because there's a... The entire land use spectrum needs to be thought through carefully so that the processes of that office are very smooth, which, I'm not going to say they're not now, it's just that we've had some bumps in the road here with some departures and some absences due to illness and other things, so we've just got to step it up and fix it. This RFP tonight is a major step forward for the town in its economic development efforts. It all becomes very humdrum when it's a procurement, but if you think about all the efforts that have occurred over the last decade and a half in town, it never really got to this point where someone is willing to spend $400,000 to buy a piece of town property and substantially more than that to buy privately-held property, abutting it, to put together a significant proposal for the town. So it's a bit of a game changer, and it puts Douglas on the map somewhat more significantly than the tri-town things. The tri-town thing is just an opportunity for a developer. This is a specific Douglas-driven, Douglas-supported initiative, and I think it's going to work out well for everyone. That's most of what I wanted to emphasize in terms of the operations of the town. I just wanted to draw some attention to the Juneteenth holiday, which is coming up this coming weekend. The town is going to comply with the state law, which is that, in this case, it's a Saturday, so the town hall is already closed. But our contractual relationships with our unions, we acknowledge Juneteenth as a holiday. Juneteenth is the day, June 19th, 1865, just about a couple of months after President Lincoln was assassinated. General Gordon Granger issued General Order Number Three when he arrived in Texas as the commanding general of the occupying forces, and basically made it very clear that all the slaves were to be freed and would no longer work without wages. It's a very important thing in American history to recognize some facts that sometimes get lost in the noise of the day. So we should... Coming from Douglas, a town that made such a huge contribution to the Civil War effort, the Union won. The Union stood for the right thing, which was to end slavery. The Union then had the duty, after it had won, at tremendous cost, still the most costly in terms of human lives, war the United States has ever fought internally. Some of the most horrible acts of cruelty against prisoners of war were committed by the two sides against each other. And General Granger's position is not one to be envied because he was an occupying general. He still had to have some kind of relationship with the people that he was occupying, which were Texas. But he still had to do what was right by what all those lives lost fought to gain, which was freedom of the slaves. So it's an opportunity for all patriots to review the history of their country and consider the issues and have intelligent conversation about what it means for the long progress towards equality and equal rights, equality of opportunity for all people that live and who are contributing to our society, regardless of their background. And so I think we're proud to take that stand and recognize the holiday for what it is, historically, why it's important for people today to be aware of it. So to that end, I did donate a whole bunch of books to the library from that period. The emphasis of my donation was... Were firsthand accounts of the war, because I think a lot of people really lose sight of just how horrible the Civil War was. The bullets these guys were shooting at each other were massive, and if you got hit, chances are you weren't going to get killed because they just weren't that accurate. You were going to be maimed. You were going to go to a tent where somebody with a saw, no anesthesia, by the way, no penicillin, because that wasn't around, was going to cut your limb off, and then you had to say your prayers to have a chance of surviving. And I think sometimes we give short shrift to the amount of pain and suffering and the destruction in this country that was fought to achieve this one goal, and it's a worthy note to stop and reflect upon. So that's why I did that, and I hope everybody takes the opportunity to think about the day.
Well spoken.
So I thank you, Mr. Chairman, for indulging me, and I had no further report at this time.
I just want to make note that you said economic development, and Bob walked right back into the room.
Like the hound dog.
And what's that is, I think he was home and heard that and flew here.
It's like banging on a bucket in a cow barn.
It's like saying Beetlejuice three times, he shows up.
So moving forward, you're going to observe that holiday?
Yes.
Good.
Yeah, we voted for that, didn't we, a couple of months ago?
It's very important to learn lessons from history, otherwise you're destined to repeat it. So do we require an executive session this evening?
Yes, you do.
All right. So then I've been looking for your motion, Mr. Bonin.
All right. I'll make a motion that we move into executive session for the purposes of litigation, interest in real property and investigations, and then to leave executive session for the sole purpose of adjourning.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing is none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Hal Davis, aye.
Kevin Morris, aye.
Bonin, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye.